There's about four of them.
Morning, boys.
Hey.
Morning.
How is y'all?
We're here.
Just peachy.
Just peachy. At least you're not sour grapes.
No, that's not yet.
Oh.
It hasn't started yet.
Prayer, please, sir?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd say I'm bad.
Are you the one that turned around at one eighty-three and cut the head off that deer?
Very little water.
Some night demon. We were going to Coleman.
And then I heard something. Turned back a little bit.
Morning. Not good.
Response team, whether our forensic people are in compliance with the state protocol. And we have to, it's it's reading the statute, I think I probably have to make a list of different cases. And say that this was complied with, this was complied with, this was complied with. Underneath the protocol, um, there are things available to adults to help. Law enforcement develop evidence for prosecute prosecuting these cases. Half the time they'll like a, an agency doesn't have time to take someone directly to Hendrick. And so then they'll give them a direction and the woman or the man will never show up. So the protocol that they want us to come up with as a response team. Is a way to make sure that these people don't fall in the cracks. And that they are helped in trying to get some aid, try to get the forensic, um. The forensic examinations done to develop the evidence to, to collect evidence in order to prosecute cases. So the state, the legislators came up with a list of people that they wanted. To, um, be on, to make sure that they were on the, um, s- sexual abuse response team. So we all got together, the, the sheriff, us, um. David Holm with the PD, with the Eastland PD, um, and a few other people and got together and came up. With names that are in compliance with the sexual response re-. I mean, sexual abuse response team that y'all need to develop. And so basically, um, here's a, here's a, you can tell from what I handed you. But this is the Senate Bill four seventy-six that actually. And y'all, y'all can look at it later, you don't have to look at it today, I just wanted everybody to have a copy of it. I'll make y'all one, yeah. Um, and basically, there's people in here that have to be, um, have to be named. And so what we did is that we went through and came up with a list of people. That are in compliance with what is requested, so you look on that first thing that I handed you. And so under the SAR team members, it says shall be, shall means that must be. Appointed by the county commissioners court of each county includes the following by December first of two thousand twenty-one. Now then, we were, I was talking to the judge about this the other day as to why the county commissioners were involved. That's because the state does not want to regulate this, they don't have time to regulate every county. So they have decided that y'all need to be the regulating body to make sure that we're all doing what ourselves to do, okay? Alright, so in order to, uh, so we've come up with members for the SAR T. So the first one is listed and I just went through one, two, three, four according to the statute. So the first one has to be someone that is responsible for organization and programs, including. Um, advocacy, that kind of thing, uh, interviews for, from people. And so it's Gina Camacho, she's the executive director of the Eastland County Crisis Center now. And so I put her down, I put what she does now, I put her qualifications. And then the last sentence, you'll see she qualifies for the number one spot of the response team. Olivia Jackson works for her, um, she is out there, she's a victim advocate also for the Eastland County Crisis Center. So Gina wanted her listed in the event that she can't come because like you can designate somebody to do it for you. And so she knew that Olivia would always be the person that she wanted to have. The second one is it's gotta be somebody from the district attorney's office. So I'm listed there because I handle the sexual assault cases in our, in our office. And so then I have my, my history and that kind of thing. Then number three is David Holm, okay, now this is weird because it has to be the chief of police. Of the largest municipality in the county, so it's either gonna be Eastland or Cisco. And I went back and checked the, um, the populations and then I also checked it currently and. Eastland has Cisco beat by about forty-five people, okay? So it really could have been either one and in the future it may be Cisco. If Cisco continues to grow and Eastland doesn't, then we'll have to change that, but right now. David Holm qualifies as the chief of police of the largest municipal, um, municipality. And according to the statute, we have to name someone as a presiding member. So when we were all together that day, we went ahead and said, if y'all approve this list, when they were nominating David Holm because. Other than either David Holm, Jason Wager, or me probably have the most years in dealing with sexual abuse cases. So David Holm, we na- we na- we nominated him as presiding member. Then we have Jason Wager, of course, our sheriff, there has to, the sheriff has to be on the team. And he could, now by the way, they can designate people temporarily, like if David couldn't make the meeting. Or if Jason couldn't make the meeting, they can designate someone to, to come and participate. Then the next person y'all probably don't know, her name is Susan Strigler. She's a forensic nurse examiner coordinator at Hendrick Medical Center, north qual- north. Now then, she is over the nurses and the staff. And make sure that things are done correctly and that the SANE exams are done correctly and the evidence is co- collected properly. And she is over the nurses that actually service Eastland County, so she's on there. Karina Morris, she works with, um, the local mental health authority, MHMR, she's assistant director. She deals with, um, a lot of people who've been, um, traumatized by different things, including sexual abuse. Carrie Nicholson, which is in our office, this is a seventh person that the committee comes up with that they might need. So we got Carrie Nicholson because Carrie is our victim assistance coordinator with the DA's office. So she qualifies to deal with these people from that point of view. And she talks to the, she talks to the victims in all of our cases that end up either pleading or going to trial or whatever. So she's on there, so the reason now under, if you look down below what we ask you to do, of course, the purpose is to. Be in compliance with the state protocol in evidence collection. And it's, it's a service that they are now developing to provide for adult sexual assault victims. The children usually don't fall through the cracks if they get reported, okay? Because CPS gets involved, the crisis center gets involved, et cetera. But adults sometimes fall through the cracks and they don't want that to continue to happen. So they wanna make sure that we come up with a protocol wherein we advise our law enforcement, we advise our SANE. We advise our victim assistance people to make sure that we do things to, to try to. Encourage these people to follow through, to file charges, to get the cases prosecuted. And of course, it has to be in compliance with the Texas government code, which, here's, here's the Texas government code. And I made a copy for, well, I'm sorry, I didn't know I had to make you a copy, but if you wanna take one and pass it around. And you know what, Judge, this one's got, it's, it's got the pink on it, so.
Do you need to keep that?
Well, uh, this is a, this is a large copy, I just made, if you wanna give. Her that one, you can have this large copy for you, okay? And then, um, so underneath the Texas government code, chapter four twenty and the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, chapter fifty-six A. Which is the collection of evidence along with the rights of the crime victim, then we have to come up with our, our protocol to be in compliance with those. That's what the legislators said in Senate Bill four seventy-six. So again, let's see, I handed y'all the Senate, Senate Bill four seventy-six and, um, okay. And then here's, here's a thicker one, so if you want that one. I just, I just made them front page copies of that stuff. And then here is a copy, if y'all want it, of the Code of Criminal Procedure one. Which there's one, two, three, four, five, nope, there's six, good, yay, there's enough, alright, okay. So what we're asking y'all today to do before December twenty-first, I know y'all meet one more time, but. I asked the judge to put me on your, um, agenda today because I wanted y'all to have time to think about it if you needed to. And talk about it, but by December first of twenty-two, we need to have the SAR team established. And then, um, then we have a year to get our protocol together that is in compliance with this. And to bring it back before you, before December first of twenty-two to get it approved, okay? Anybody got any questions? That was fast, I know.
Brad, you wanna add anything?
Gentlemen, I'd just, I would just say Ms. Vickers done, done an excellent job giving y'all a rundown. Has basically been mandated by the Senate and legislature. It's not the first time you gentlemen have had something pass, pass the buck, but this is definitely one of those situations where the legislature is. So there has to be a governing authority that's overseeing this matter. Uh, frankly, they put the majority of us on the district attorney's office, but you are the legislative body, o- obviously for the county. So the mandatory reporting, uh, I would encourage, uh, if, if the court is. To go ahead and pass this resolution today, uh, so we're not waiting to the last minute. There's no, there's no incentive of us getting around, it's mandated by the legislature, every county has to do this process. You probably did an excellent job of getting all the necessary parties together. Uh, quite frankly, we had a really good meeting, uh, when everybody got together, it's, it's a very serious topic. There are harsh concerns about what we can do better, uh, in these, uh, situations. And people who have been nominated and, and recommended, uh, uh, are topping their fields. To Eastland County, so, uh, we're real fortunate to, uh, have, uh, this group of volunteers who agreed to.
They really did volunteer.
Holm did a little bit of swallowing and, and Preston was extremely happy that.
He didn't have to do it.
That there'd been a slight population shift. Any, any questions you have, I'm, I can, I can almost guarantee you that Brenda can answer.
The judge asked me this other day, and I, I meant to say this a moment ago, he said, Brenda, who do we report this to? Y'all are it, okay, the statute does not. Name anybody that y'all have to go to and say they're not doing what they're supposed to do. So there's nothing in here about sanctions or anything else, I'm assuming that the legislators are gonna wait, just like they always do. That if something doesn't get in compliance, then somebody files a lawsuit and then case law. Creates new statutory language, so right now, this is all brand new. We could have combined with other counties, but we as a group that were together were like, that's not a good idea. Because then y'all would have to work with another commissioners court. Or maybe it actually, if their population is below a certain amount, you can combine with their counties. But we decided it was much easier and much more seamless for us to deal with it just amongst ourselves. And for y'all to just deal with us on your own, haven't, without having to get in with other people.
So if we adopt this resolution, it just stays in our records, you keep a record of it, you know it's been done, if you ever. Have to prove it up to the state, then you've got it, that we do have this SAR T in place.
Yeah, and if we don't do what we're supposed to do, Judge, frankly, I don't know what y'all are supposed to do about it, because the statute does not say.
Do we don't report it to OCA or the Supreme Court?
You do not, not according to the statute, y'all are the, y'all are the, like, like Brad said, y'all are the legislative body. That is over this, which is just crazy, like I said, it probably if somebody doesn't be in compliance. And I would think, I don't, I don't know about the big counties, I mean, they're gonna have an issue because they're probably have a much larger team with a lot more responsibilities. And have to meet more often, we have to meet every other month, by the way, and, and come up with this. But if, I would assume that if we don't comply, then y'all could probably file something with the court to, to. To make us do it, to compel us to do it or something like that. But I don't think you're gonna have a problem with your team here.
Sounds like a good team to me. Gentlemen, any questions or comments on either Brenda Vickers or District Attorney Brad? This, alright, then can we have a motion then to adopt this resolution? Uh, approving the team appointments as recommended by Eastern County Colonel District Attorney? And allow me to sign the same. Motion made, seconded, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye, aye as well, it's unanimous. And I'm going to sign this one and hand it off to Kathy.
They may have some questions for you, EBI.
Copy for your file.
We did wanna thank you and I wanna say a special thanks to Mrs. Vickers.
Brenda put some time into getting all that, uh, prepared for us.
Thank you, I appreciate it, it's nice to see everybody, now I don't know everybody's name, I'm sorry.
Well, this is Annie Maxwell, Commissioner, Precinct One. James Crenshaw, Commissioner, Precinct Two, Ryan Wilson, Commissioner, Precinct Three. And Robert Rains, Commissioner, Precinct Four. You can see on the, see on the map, the part, the pink part in the middle, that's the precinct one, the yellow's precinct two, the blue's precinct three, and the greens precinct four.
Okay, cool.
And that's the new map, that's the old map that we're gonna continue to use on for the next ten years too.
Okay, cool, okay, well, it's nice to meet you all, okay, thank you.
Alright, item number four is to discuss, consider any proposed or pending contracts, agreements. I don't have any beyond what we've got already listed out here in the agenda. Uh, any other elected or appointed officials with any kind of contract matters to bring forward today? Carrying nothing in, there's no, uh, item on four, so we'll move on to number five. And this is discuss, consider traffic control signs, traffic control and signs on County Road one forty-five, Precinct Four. And, uh, Commissioner Rains, I do have a publisher's affidavit, we did a cutout on all the newspapers when they came out. So with that, what next step do you want us to do?
I don't even think we have to vote on it, Judge, I think according to the statute, we just had to have a public hearing.
Well, do you want us to go ahead and vote, just make it official?
We can vote on it, establish four-way stops at the intersection, County Road one forty-five and one forty-one, one thirty and one forty-five.
Is it four-way stop, at what?
One thirty and one forty-five, one forty-one and one forty-five, and one thirty-two and one forty-five. In case anybody was wondering, that is the law to, for us to establish regulations on a county road. And it requires the public hearing and then public notice in the paper.
Would you read the motion back, just so we've got everything right on the county road crossings?
Okay, the motion to be voted, or to, motion of second to be made, to establish four-way stops. At County Road one thirty and one forty-five, one thirty-two and one forty-five, one forty-one and one forty-five?
Alright, do we have a motion for that? Do we have a second?
And that's gonna be precinct four, if you don't mind.
It's all in precinct four, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion of second, all in favor, say aye, and aye as well. Robert, I'm gonna hand this to you, because this got all the publications and affidavit, you can keep that file, since it's in your precinct. Alright, that takes us to item number six. Discuss, consider JP Court Tech Fund update concerning employee salary and take possible action, Judge Glenn, Judge Spear. We might need to get another chair out here, there's one right here or in the, okay. Judge Glenn, Judge Spear, how are y'all today?
Good.
Fire in the frogs here.
Alright.
Oh, you gotta scoot out.
You don't wanna get the overspray on you back there.
I am the voluntold speaker.
Okay.
I brought this up at the last commissioners court meeting, that, uh, House Bill thirty-six oh seven, they added, uh. It would've been approved two years ago and there was some confusion and they clarified it and it states that tech fund money. May be used for court personnel salaries and benefits, tech fund monies may be used to assist a constable's office. Or other entity, and it says, it still says, is the commissioners court is still in charge. Of administering the fund and must approve expenditures, but these are the options.
Okay.
And that's from our legislative update.
Is there a new house bill that?
This is from our legislative update, this is the one that we had.
But I tried to pull up this house bill out of this legislature and it's not coming up because it's from two years ago?
All they did was to clarify the, uh, the verbiage, because it's no longer, has a, uh, it has a start date, but it doesn't have an end date. But I can find it and bring it to you if, okay, but I have a hearing in fifteen minutes.
So what is your proposal, Judge Glenn, Judge Spear?
Well, we'd just like to give our clerk a raise.
She's no longer a clerk, she's our coordinator.
Okay. Well, do you have any dollar amounts or we need to know what's in the fund and that sort of thing and see if it's feasible?
We'd like to ask for like fifty cents an hour.
Okay, do you know if there's enough money in the fund to do that, to take that action?
With GFA, I'm not exactly sure what our funding is.
I knew that was gonna come up at some point during this morning's discussion.
As of September, there was forty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
Okay.
We do not have payroll lines budgeted for this year.
Say that again now?
Payroll lines are not budgeted in the tech fund for this year.
So you're saying that we can't do it because it's not budgeted, or we have to make an amendment if we decide to do this?
If the court decides this is an emergency, we can amend the budget.
An emergency out, we've always been told is a great public necessity. So are you making a recommendation?
I'm not making a recommendation, that is up to the court.
Gentlemen, what's your?
Can they not do a transfer into the regular budget?
Um.
You know what I'm saying?
I don't know that that would be a good idea. Because then we've lost where JP Technology funded.
Right. Because even though it's just a thousand and forty, when you're gonna have to figure out.
Fringe.
Fringe on all of it.
And this would only affect the justice court, court coordinator, because you only have the justice court tech fund is what we're talking about.
Yes.
So anybody else that would be wondering why they didn't get the raise would be because they're not working for the JP Court. There's a separate funding mechanism for that, that needs to be known.
Or they don't have any special funds, because a lot of the clerks use their special funds for such.
But we're talking about JP Court Tech Fund right here, yeah.
So the house bill's saying that we, that's what you need to do?
It was clarifying, uh, two years ago, they said that, the way it read two years ago was, this was a one-time, one-shot deal. And then they came back at the legislative update and said, no, there was some confusion, you can use this.
Well, I'd be in favor of using it if we can find a way to make that happen through the budget process, if we can, we can, if we can't, we can't then. I don't know what everybody, it's just my opinion, but.
How would that work, Loretta, if he had set up payroll line items in his special funds? Would they get two checks?
No, it would be one check. Hopefully, it would be one check. Paid out of two funds. We do that on some employees.
So, oh, okay, is it kinda like my records manager, management funds?
DA investigator, he's paid out of a jillion funds.
Yeah, we have a couple of people in the DA's office that are paid out of multiple funds.
So it, like on payday, like my records management clerk, you transfer those funds over to the regular salary line item?
No, it gets paid out of your records management. It's just, everything clears through payroll clearing and operations clearing. So it's paid out of that fund, it's just the money's pulled from that fund to go into the clearing.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, thank you.
That's actual dollars that are pulled.
Okay.
That's why I don't do math.
Well, we could do this, we could say that we do approve it as long as we can find a way to fund it through the budget. And then you can bring it back to us at some point and tell us that we can do it, we can't do it, and we can start from that point. Can you think, just sitting, this is kinda dropping on you, but can you think of any way to make it work through the budgetary process? Bring, uh, so what you're saying, you gotta have line items to expand out into payroll.
Yes.
Which we don't have.
Um, and it's been done before in other departments, that the court actually declared an emergency and did it.
If we start declaring everything a great public necessity, that kind of eliminates the reason for it, but, you know. I, I'd be in favor of doing it if we can make it work through the budget process.
I can, I can throw this out there, if, if for some reason she were to leave, we're sunk.
Yeah, I don't even want both y'all to leave the county unless she stays here, that's when I had to be the JP and the county judge?
We're sunk.
Trust me, it helped that she knew what she did with us being new coming in.
Sure.
It made a lot of difference.
Sure.
I'm sorry, you were gonna say something?
If, if y'all get me the language that clarifies it.
Okay.
And then let's bring it back next commissioners court, is that okay?
When is the next commissioner?
On the twenty-second.
Okay, cause we have school on the twenty-eighth through the third.
Okay.
Gone again, Judge Spear.
Getting them all lined up for you.
Yeah, thank you, gone again, that's alright.
It's alright, we're sta- we're sending her to school on, in March, so.
At least not all three of them are gonna be gone at the same time, that's good, that's good, okay. Can we have a motion then to table this matter until, uh, either November the twenty-second? Or the justice feast let us know when to put it back on the agenda? Motion made, seconded to table this matter, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, same sign, okay. If, if you'll get that to Loretta, we'll see if we can work out some way to make it happen.
Alright, appreciate it.
Alright. Alright. See y'all later. Number seven, discuss and consider canvass of the November, November second, twenty twenty-one, uniform election, Summer Alvera. Alvera, how are you this morning?
I'm good, how are y'all?
Good.
Thanks for having me.
You bet.
Inside, um, you have the unofficial results and I think a precinct by precinct report and the canvas, canvas report. So we just have to go over the canvas and then accept it, accept the results.
One thousand one hundred and nineteen people.
Nine point three seven percent of the registered voters. Registered voters, now the twelve thousand, wow.
And we only had, um, I wanna say there was forty-five mail ballots, I sent out fifty-eight and received forty-five back.
So all eight of the propositions passed, didn't they?
Uh. I think number two in our county didn't, but I think overall they did in the state.
I know, I know in the state they did. You're right, number two barely lost, five thirty-eight to five seventy-four.
But in the state, they passed all of them, so.
Did all the other propositions pass, you're sorry?
Yes.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments about the canvassing of the votes? Alright, can we have a motion then to accept the canvassing of the votes and declare that it is final? My name's Seconded, all in favor, say aye, any opposed, some sign, and it carries.
Thank you.
Is this what I need to keep for twenty-two months, okay?
And the keys.
But you, you just print this off, I think it's all done?
Yes, sir, out of our system, yeah.
Pretty fast.
Yes. I hope it stays the same in that department, I really do, because if not, we better hire some more people. Because that ain't counted off. Hey, that's, that's me doing it, yeah.
Thank you, Summer.
Thank y'all.
You bet. Alright, item number eight, discuss, consider sale of eastern county property at precinct three yard in Gorman. To the state of Texas, uh, or TexDOT, parcel number five 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 seven two. And explain ownership issues with adjacent property, five 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 eight seven in Gorman. Grant authority to sign deed and all related real estate closing documents for the sale of kind of property located at three oh seven East Lovett, Gorman. To the state or TexDOT. Here's the file on that, to you as well. So I finally got back with Bob, or Bob Bass got back with me and he's, there was an issue on the reverter language. He wanted it to revert back to the county if the state ever used it for something else besides public use. Uh, there was lots of discussion between the state and I and Bob. We do have a, uh, we do have a current appraisal. It is selling it to the state. The state is gonna widen the highway and put in a water retaining pond in there. It does have a perp, uh, public purpose. Bob Bass finally said, well, it's probably good if we're happy with the value, and the land is gonna be used for public purpose. So that's what he told us. So I think we're to the point that we now can go ahead and do this. Uh, we've already signed the, uh, contract for the sale. We have signed the possession use agreement. We finally got that funded about two weeks ago. That's the three thousand dollars that we got for them to come on in and start using the land. And so we have that money already in hand. The purchase price for that section is twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. That's what we had agreed to with the state, and I'll explain to you about the, the difference in the two properties here in a moment. But at this point, we are ready to sign the deeds and whatever else, uh, when they're prepared, when they're ready to go. And either Commissioner Wilson or I, one, need to be able to go do that at the title company whenever they say it's ready to do, ready to sign everything, so. Um, let me go ahead and, while y'all think about that, I'll go ahead and explain the other property, which is just to the, okay, Ronnie, help me. This is State Highway six. Is that going to the west where the, where the barn actually is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The park that we own in whole is where the yard is. There's nothing on it except part of a fence. And that is five-five-five, five-seven-two. That's the park that we're gonna sell today, if commissioners agree to it and allow one of us to sign the deeds on it. And then the property just to the west is the one that the state said, the county may have some kind of ownership in it along with Denver Rainey, City of Gorman, and Mr. and Ms. Rodriguez, who own property right around that. Then Clara Castaneda called me back about two weeks ago and said, the county doesn't really own anything in that second property, which is, uh, their parcel number, okay, I've gotta find it. That's the seven-two. Five-five-five-eight-seven. That attaches to our property to the west, and she said, the only interest that the, that the county has in it is that some of the structures have been built on that second property that's owned by Gorman, Mr. Rainey, and Mr. and Ms. Rodriguez. There may be some of those structures that are located on a little bit of our property that we're selling here, the, the five-seven-two. So she said, if, if we don't accept our agreement here on five-seven-two, we'd have to get another appraisal done that shows the diminishment of the value of the second property having anything that encroaches onto our first property, which would be like six of one half dozen of another. If you, if you take away the value because there's something encroaching on it, they're gonna pay us less for it, but then pay us on property number two for the encroachment.
Right.
So it makes really no sense, and we've already been on this for two years, unless you wanna do another two years on this.
No, sir. Not at all.
To, uh, I think it's, it's in the county's best interest to move forward, and there's really nothing to be done on that second property. We're not gonna get anything off of that. With four ownership, uh, four people owning it, or four entities owning it, we wouldn't have gotten very much off of that anyway. We've already gotten three thousand dollars for the possession use agreement. We are gonna be in line to get twenty-two eight seventy-six for selling that, uh, the yard part to the state. Mr. Wilson, you wanna add anything to that?
I was, I was gonna ask Ms. Loretta, after we sign this, do we cut off the water and electricity, any insurance to it, or can we?
Oh, once ownership is transferred, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's still a telephone line, I believe.
Probably, yes, ma'am. Yeah.
But we'll, we'll forego all ownership once we do that, including that second part about the encroachment. We won't have any interest down there, county.
It'll be good.
Okay, and then at some point, we can come back in and discuss what you'd like to do with the proceeds from that.
Yes, sir.
The three thousand dollars are sitting in the treasurer's office account, waiting for us to do something, so there's some money there to do, whatever you think of and plan for, but, um, I think to make this work at this point, it would be a good idea to give one of us the authority to sign every kind of closing document that would have to happen. The deed, all the, the HUD ones, the closing, everything that goes along with that, to get this conveyed over to the state of Texas.
I make the motion, let the judge sign. Any documents that need to be signed?
You backed right out of that one, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
He ain't got a second, yeah.
He didn't got a second, yeah.
Andy helped me.
We've been sitting here looking at each other grinning this whole time. We knew what we were gonna do. That's why I tried to beat you. I'll second it.
What do I, do I get a choice in this matter?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, and let's just make sure that is to the authority to sign the deed and all related real estate closing documents for the sale of county property located at three oh seven east Lubbock in Gorman. Okay, with that then, uh, do we have a vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome. We're about to get there, Ronnie.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, I will take care of the utilities.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, then that moves us on to item number nine. It's funny these are both coming due at the same time here.
Yeah.
Discuss, consider exchange of eastern county property with Cisco Development Corporation, CDC, for the precinct four yard in Cisco. Grant authority to sign the contract to exchange county property at one oh one west eighteenth Cisco for the CDC property at four hundred convenience way Cisco. Grant authority to sign the deed and all related real estate closing documents for exchange of property. And this is the file for that one. Uh, got in with Bob Bass, and the, the status on this is that we needed authority to sign the contract to do the exchange. Talked with Bob Bass back on the twenty-ninth of October, same time I talked to him about the other land, and he said, it's good to go. He's reviewed that, uh, contract that we'd have, the exchange or sales contract. Uh, we've got Justin Jaworski here with Cisco CDC, we've got, uh, Darwin Archer here, city manager of Cisco. And, uh, Robert and I have gone through the additional posting process. Nobody made any calls or contacts to you about any concerns they've got about the transfer of the information?
No.
So at this point, uh, we're ready to proceed on this sales contract, and Justin, you had told me that maybe it was gonna happen pretty fast because you're going to have a meeting with the Cisco City tonight and CDC tomorrow. Okay, any idea how long it might take? This contract starts the clock ticking on the, uh, title work of the title company.
We were given a ballpark of about forty-five days.
Okay. Okay. So at this point then, I think it'd be a good idea if we give authority to one of us, either Robert, here's where your turn is to come back. Either Robert, Art, me, or whoever else, to be able to sign all the documents whenever Justin and Darwin tell me that they're ready to go.
I'll make the motion that you, like, can sign everything, Judge.
I'll second it.
That was a pretty quick second on that one. Okay.
He's quick.
He is quick. So let me just make sure that the motion is to grant the authority to sign the deed and all related real estate closing documents for the exchange of property between Cisco Development Corporation and eastern county for the precinct four yard.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna let Kathy get caught up.
And that's located at one oh one west eighteenth?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
And the other one is the one that we're exchanging at four, Kathy, is at four hundred convenience way Cisco.
He's excited, Kathy.
Yeah.
I know.
Can't you see, ma'am, jumping up and down, you can't feel it?
All right.
All right, so we've got the motion to, uh, accept the contract and sign it and all the deeds and everything else that needs to go with it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. Do you want me to go ahead and sign the contract now, and you have one to take with you?
Let's wait until we get our other two final approvals and then move on that, if that's okay with you.
And then you'll bring up those back to me for me to sign?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then they'll go to the title company and get the title work started?
Yes, sir.
All right, good deal. That okay with you, Robert?
That's good with me, 'cause I know where he's at. I'll put a nod on his head.
Well, there you go.
I don't think he can catch me. He looks pretty fast.
I've known him way too.
Yeah, sorry about your bad luck.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Kathy, whenever they bring you something to sign, I'll bring it to you and sign it in front of you, and you can certify it, and we'll go with it.
Thank you.
All right. Item number ten, discuss, consider requesting proposals for American Recovery Plan grant administrator, Commissioner Crenshaw.
Yeah, I was at a conference this last week, and they suggested to us that we get a grant administrator before we start really giving, giving this money out. And legal advice, too, so I would just, really, I just wanna make a motion that we go out and we get, what, bid for it?
Uh, request for proposal.
A proposal for, yeah.
RFP, RFP.
Yeah. Make a motion that, uh, we go out for proposal for a grant administrator.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Good idea.
Um... Hang on. For RFPs, for a grant administrator?
For ARPA.
For the ARPA funds? Right?
Right.
Okay. And then they will be brought up today on what's already been given out, correct?
There's no money left. I mean, there, no money has left us yet to go anywhere.
Oh, gotcha. It's still setting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so far, we haven't paid anybody out, have we? Yeah. And before we do, I would think that.
Yeah.
And what's number eleven?
Yeah.
Does this have to run for two weeks? I mean, I don't know how that.
It wasn't.
How long would this run for? Do you just?
Darwin, y'all did this for the city of Cisco, right? So you got administrator with RFP? Did y'all, did y'all send out something through grant, a grant portal, or how did you make that work to get your grant administrator lined up?
So, um, our secretary sent out to, uh, you know, we have a running list of those who are interested in taking, uh, and interested in, uh, being given information by any time we do grant administrations. We sent those directly out. Uh, we posted it to our website. Uh, those things, we did that for, uh, two postings of newspaper and in that time period.
Okay.
We'll make selection via committee after that.
Okay, all right, all right. So we have a motion and a second then, that we will, uh, request, uh, RFPs for the American Recovery Plan grant administrator. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. It is unanimous. Okay. Would you, Darwin, would you mind sending me over a list of who you used?
Absolutely, I'll have to.
I don't mean who you grant, who you gave it to. I know who you gave it to, but a list of the, the ones that you sent out notices to?
Absolutely.
And we got one or two already in, so would you mind emailing that to me?
Don't mind a bit.
Good deal, thank you. All right. Item number eleven is discuss and consider delaying American Recovery Plan funds distribution until U.S. Treasury final rules are adopted. Uh, Commissioner Crenshaw brought us.
Yeah, this, this was also discussed in this conference. I mean, with what, what we're doing, uh, I believe that, especially, they said the premium pay was gonna get us. Said, you better have a grant administrator, and you better have legal advice before you start paying out on premium pay. The rest of it, I believe we can get by with. I mean, we fought, as long as they don't go over this twenty-five thousand per individual on, on premium pay. But with that saying, I, I would think that, uh, as long as we got a grant administrator and some legal advice.
Yeah, 'cause the rules, the rules are still floating.
And well, also in here, it, it says changes will not be held against a county who relied on the interim rules, so.
What page are you on of that slide?
That is, uh, page six.
Slide twelve.
Slide twelve.
But that don't mean that that's true when, when it comes down to the final rules, but.
Well, and like, you know, Loretta's deal the other day, they come back and said that on the premium pay, it couldn't be anybody that had made over, what, fifty thousand?
That was a number that was used for an example in my training. Last week, I was on the phone with Trimmer.
Well, yeah, he, he's the one that gave this presentation.
Uh, with TAC, and, um, what it is, is the regular annual salary and remuneration, and the premium pay also with, and I'm gonna say fringe, because that's what we call it. Um, cannot exceed a hundred and fifty percent of the verifiable annual salary for the state or local area, whichever is higher, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe that's what it is, but I don't know. That, that's why he suggested that on this money, that we just really kinda hold on to it till after the final rule is made. So, I mean, with, I know I'd like to get my employees some money.
Right.
Yeah, which everybody else does, too, and I don't, you know. The way it reads, I believe we could do it, but like I said, I mean, as long as we got a administrator here and legal advice on it before we actually pay it out.
Yeah.
The rest of the stuff is probably, that we've kind of agreed upon, can probably go through, you know, unless they're gonna pay premium pay.
Let's see, we've agreed to the hospital premium pay, we've agreed to the premium pay for the Cisco Fire Department, we've agreed for dispatch, uh, software, but we've got a, a little bit of a hill to climb there yet, according to Jim Allison.
Even, even with the, uh, hospital pay, I mean, he was giving quite a bit to the, them employees. It was like twelve, thirteen dollars an hour that he was gonna premium pay them.
Yeah, 'cause he kinda mentioned it was premium pay.
Huh?
He said premium pay.
Yeah.
Is what he was gonna give.
It was a hundred dollars a pay cycle, is all it was.
Yeah. But two hundred thousand, isn't that what y'all agreed to give?
Yeah, but, so if you figure that out per employee, what, what is that gonna do for each employee that he's giving it to? Is he gonna go over the twenty-five thousand? Is he gonna go over the hundred and fifty percent?
Loretta's.
Well, and I have, I have a flash drive from the hospital. I've not looked at their records yet. Um, but I know they were going to pay, like, the nurses a hundred dollar shift differential. Um, and then other employees were going to get fifty dollar shift differential, but it still all has to meet the premium pay criteria.
Yeah.
And then the last thing we've already agreed to is the water district to buy a generator.
Well, and westbound.
And westbound.
That's right. We gotta buy westbound.
I don't think we're gonna have any problem in there.
No, those two deals.
I mean, yeah, the way he explained it, that the premium pay's gonna get you on any of this, if.
Well, so what do we need to do? Like, today, we're gonna be talking about the water district, uh, saying, and we've got an MOU that Tony Warford prepared for the water district. And it looks okay to me. Loretta's looked at it. Do we need to go ahead and agree to that pending interim rule changes, or?
I'd think if we're gonna hire an administrator, let's wait until we get that person on board.
That's exactly right.
I, I would hate for, for us to do something now, and them to come in and wonder why we even hired them if we're already giving out the money without seeking their advice, if we're gonna hire somebody to administer it.
Darwin, have y'all released any of your funds?
Uh, no, it's.
Do y'all do have a grant administrator there now, correct?
Has she been there a couple of weeks or a month?
Oh, six weeks, six to eight weeks.
Okay, that's it. Well, I'd, I'd hate to walk it back, as they say, if we've already agreed to do this for these different entities, and then we, I, I can see if we can't do it. If for some legal reason, we can't do it, that would be different, but from the rules that we had to work with, which is what, term of effect tells us in here about the water district and the water supply and the fire department and the, the hospital. Looks like we go ahead and, I guess go through the administrator to fund all of it at some point.
Right.
Okay.
And what I've heard is they're expecting the final rule probably in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two. So I think, like I've said before. So I think, like I've said before, once they get this second reporting period in, then they...
That's when they'll, yeah. They're, they're waiting to see what everybody spends it on, and then they're gonna come up and say, "Oh, no, not this. Oh, yeah, okay, this. Oh, no, not this."
Right.
Yeah. They're, they're waiting to see what people spend it on before they decide yes or no.
So you, you got from conference that if someone wanted to upgrade software or like the, what do you call them, generators? You think that'll be okay?
I believe, I believe it would.
Okay. It's just the premium, the salaries or what?
The only thing he said was gonna hurt you is the premium pay because he said it, a can of worms is what he said right now because it's changing, you know? It's gonna probably change. And you gotta make sure that you're paying your lowest paid employees this premium pay.
Yeah.
Which for the county, most of, everybody is.
Well, that's everyone just about here, yeah.
So we're, we're not gonna go over that, that, that percentage or that money in there. But I'd like, I'd like to see us have the administrator before we make the
Go work.
Final decision.
Donald will, too. Yeah.
We need to get our administrator hired as quick as possible.
Yeah, I, I would think so.
I have an RFP from another county that you and I can look at as quick as we need to.
Darwin, why haven't y'all paid anything out yet since y'all have a administrator, just ain't had time?
Um, just because, um, I, I brought all the expenditures to my council at the last meeting.
I see.
And so...
Ain't got there yet.
Just taking my time.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, that, that's what they suggested. Hold on to that money as long as you can before you pay it out to somebody because it's, you're not gonna get it back. I mean, it's...
Well, and the thing is, is you're gonna be liable for it. Once it leaves you, if you've gotta replace it, you gotta replace it.
Yeah.
So if we pay our employees premium pay, then we can't do it, then we get to send people home without pay until we make it back up.
No, we can't do that either.
Yeah.
Why can't we?
Department of Labor won't let us do it.
We're gonna get to this one in a minute here, but this is the MOU of the Water Supply District. I just realized something on here. Item number three on here says, "Such funds will not be advanced until written approval for such use under the American Rescue Plan Act is obtained." That's a pretty good part to have in your MOU right there. All right. What do we want to do, gentlemen?
I would, uh...
Delay until we get something from the...
Till we get a grant administrator and a legal advice on how to pay this out and make sure that we, we're not liable for it.
Okay. I think that was a motion and I heard a second.
Wow, it's like, was that a motion?
Yeah.
It was a motion.
Okay.
And I'll get you to read the motion back to us when you get through.
So a motion by Crenshaw, second by Maxwell, for the county to wait until legal advice is obtained and a grant administrator is in place. Is that good?
Sure. Sounds good to me. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. All right. And that takes us to number 12. Anybody need a break? Oh, no break. Number 12, County Auditorate should present audited District Attorney, Sheriff, Constable One, Constable Two, Chapter 59, forfeiture reports. Ms. Keith?
You have all four of the reports in your packets. And Constable One had no forfeiture, seizure or forfeiture collections. Constable Two also had no seizure or forfeiture, I should call it, revenue. And the third report is the District Attorney and the seized funds is Section One. And during, and they're using the state fiscal year. And the amount seized was on second page, page two, number two at the top, $26,694. And the amount forfeited for all agencies was $4,810. And the amount transferred to the forfeiture account was $6,877.81. And then under forfeiture funds, which is Roman numeral two, that starts at the bottom of page two, under B on page three, and number two, the amount forfeited and received by their agency was $6,877.81. They earned $134.42 in interest. And on page four, under F, proceeds received by the DA's office from sale of forfeited property, $12,700. Under I, the total expenditures of forfeited funds during the reporting period, $6,772.21. And item J, they ended up with $230,611.44 in their forfeiture account. And the rest of the pages are just telling what's in these numbers. And I did review their files. Then on the Sheriff's Department's report, and seized fund is Roman numeral one, um, on page two. Number two, the amount seized and transferred to the District Attorney, $3,389. Then, and, and that was then turned over, so they ended zero in their seizure. And then Roman numeral two, B, the amount forfeited to and received by the reporting agency, $2,337.49. And on page three, J, the ending balance was $2,563.41. And this was in the District Attorney's files, so I did review their seizure and forfeiture.
All right. Got any questions or comments on these Chapter 59 forfeiture reports? All right. Can we have a motion then to accept those reports as presented?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, and that carries. All right, good deal. Thank you. Item 13, discuss, consider using American Rescue Plan Act funds for county employees. Ms. Jinto, Ms. Keith?
Basically, all I was asking is an update. Uh, Commissioner Wilson had brought it up the first time, um, and I think it was brought up another meeting and y'all discussed it. And then, that I wasn't here, and I think it might have brought up to a third meeting and I wasn't here, talked about, just discussion only. And so basically, I wanted to know where we stood because it hasn't been mentioned again and it's been shuffled to the side. So basically, I just wanna know.
Did you learn what you need to know from our previous discussion this morning, probably?
I do.
Okay.
And I did. I would also like to pass this out, and I understand that you guys have already received copies from the HR department. I have lost a staff member and, you know, and I get it when you say they can go down the street and get a job, but, you know, that's really kind of unfair, guys.
I didn't say that.
No, but in the past, and then Robert said it, so, um, our employees take pride in their work. They take pride in working for you guys. They appreciate the, um, fringes that you do give to them. Trust me, they do. Um, but even though insurance is going up, so is putting food on the table. Inflation is getting them. We were already behind for many years ago before this board for not giving cost of living every year. So I would like for y'all to honestly consider when and if the time comes to think about the employees. Um, some of them, without degrees, make more than elected officials, you and I. Uh, and they hold a certificate. Some don't hold a certificate. Now, that is, to me, is not fair. Um, but I lost a good employee. Uh, we've invested, um, seizures training in her. This is taxpayer money. Uh, that was invested, sent her to seizures DPS. That takes a lot to learn. You can ask Jason. When, when you're reporting to DPS, FBI and all that, you have to have a good, solid background on what you're reporting because you're messing up someone's life if you do it wrong. Send them to net data conferences, you know, we've invested in webinars, uh, which sometimes we close the office down. So like other offices, we invest in our employees, we send them, we train them because we want the best for Eastland County. Um, this employee, uh, went to work at the city of Gorman making more money, same good insurance. Um, pretty much the same benefits, maybe a little bit less than what the county has. And the plus for her, she lives in Gorman. She won't have to drive because gas was eating her up because the inflation got her. So, but this one, I've invested this much in. She's been here three years for the county.
Three? Only three of us, huh?
Only three, I know, I know. But she, uh, said it was the hardest decision she ever made, but she had to, to get more money. So...
She took care of things in the criminal court aspect for us up here.
She was very good and, and you know, it's what you have to believe in, you know, you, you want that. Yes, I know. You can go to Walmart and get paid more, as you've said, and that's true. So I have been applying and I've gotten four applications. Two of them was by reading the newspaper. The other ones are from, I finally put it on Facebook, Eastland County Jobs, and I got hits off of that. So...
I understand that, and I understand that we're very underfunded, but understand this, we're not out there selling a service. We're using taxpayers' money. So every dollar we, we expend comes from somebody else's buck-bill fund. It's not like they go to Walmart and buy a, a toy or a box of candy or something that they got to. It's, we're taking that from them. We're, we're not asking, we're not begging, we're taking.
But they chose to make Eastland County their home, so they buy a property here which triggers revenue and recording fees, which triggers tax money.
Which triggers very little revenue and recording fees, which taxpayers is like 84%, I think, last year of all the money we expend. Pays the 84% of the budget, something like that.
So...
So that's, that's, that, that, that's my deal, is, okay, your employee's having a problem with inflation, so we're gonna take it away from somebody out here that's working for it, too, so that your employee don't have to suffer with it. They gotta suffer with it.
But how much are they paid per hour?
Well, I don't know.
You know?
We, I mean, we don't know. We just take it away from them. So you walk a line in there for us at this table. Do we, do we weigh the fact that insurance went up double digits percentage? Do we weigh the fact that they get paid holidays and paid time off when not everybody does that?
True.
You know, you got a retirement package that comes in that not only do you put into, we put into it, and you're guaranteed by state law of 7% return on your retirement, which is not...
What you're vested.
Yeah. Well, even before you're vested, you get a 7% return on your money, which is not guaranteed by any Walmart or anybody else. There, I understand, and, and you and I've worked here a very long time.
Yes.
A very long time. There, there is a downside to coming to work for a municipality or a county or even the state now because the state just redid everything they, they know. Their, their retirement is way worse than ours, and that's the reason why they're not making any, they don't, they got job openings everywhere. They start their hands out, out there about the same what we pay our people now. What I'm saying is, there, there is a thin line between us robbing somebody else to Peter the PayPal type situation.
Well, and I, yeah, and I understand, everyone's hurting.
Yeah.
I do understand that.
You know, um, I'm proud, I mean, the judge knows, everybody knows, I, I print everybody around us tax information. I've got it on my desk. I look at it every year. I'm proud to say that, that we're one of the lowest tax rates around here, you know? But that being said is, I don't wanna be one of the highest. Nobody wants us to be one of the highest.
No.
So the only way we can keep the growth going as we continue to see is to keep our rate low to encourage people to come here.
Well, your comp, your conversation today is about paying out of the ARPA funds.
Yeah, sorry, we've gone on a rabbit...
That's a one-time, that's a one-time payment.
Yes.
So, but your concern is that if we bump it up one time, everybody's gonna wanna keep it at that same threshold for the next budget year, for budget year 23.
Yes, but...
That's your concern. Your concern's getting it paid out at one time.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause we all know it's gonna be a run, one-time pay.
Well, we've...
But then again, you bucked...
We've found in the past where sometimes the one-time pay becomes the all for everybody.
I've seen that many years here, yes, I have.
And that's your concern.
And I've also seen in the middle of budget year, people get raises. So, I mean, I, I've seen that, too. And I always, every year, ask a raise for my employees, but you know...
Really?
Yes, because I am their voice. Because they, you know, they're working, they can't come up here. Same way with your guys, you know, and girls, whoever y'all work. But I just want y'all to consider that. I just wanted to visit with y'all about it. Um, my last question is, how much do we have in CDs? Not the checking account.
It's on the investment report for today. Judge, would you test those down?
Wait, that's not big enough.
I did not print the 97 pages. I just could not do it.
Thank you.
Um, they are working on making it smaller. Um, at the end of the September packet, the investment report, and these are as of September 30th.
Do you have a total of those, or do I need to add them?
Um, well, the total should be...
Total for each one?
On, nope, it's on. Okay. Um, yes, we'll have to add them. And at the bottom is the ARPA funds.
One says Texas Class is the ARPA fund.
It's roughly 8.4 million in First Financial, but, or 844,000 in First Financial.
Yeah, let's get that right.
Okay, what was it? I'm sorry.
But you can't add that 107,000.
Oh, that's right. That's, that's designated.
Yeah, I don't want designated or ARPA funds. I need to know what the county's investing.
740 in First Financial for General Fund, undesignated.
740,000?
In First Financial. Then between Shirts Bank, Texas Bank and Prosperity Bank, we have 750,000. And then you'll see in Texas Class, Texpool Prime and Texpool, we have roughly 1.3 million. And I will remind you, the suggestion is to have between four and six months operating expenditures and fund balance.
And I would state that when I first took office in January 1st, 2007, we had about 200,000 CDs total. That's all we had. And then we had a huge flood and we had to start paying out funds to get all the trash cleaned up at Lake Leon. It's taken us 15 years to get to this point where we have some money back.
And then you got reimbursed for the FEMA after we expended first.
75% we got reimbursed for. But we had to have it to spend it to get reimbursed. That's the way that pony show goes.
So what is in the checking account? So this is just in what you call savings, if you will?
If you look at Christina's... If you look at Christina's report. And again, this is as of the end of September.
So, my next question is, how much would it cost to give all the employees? Three percent?
No, that's something I have to calculate.
The last time we started looking at that, which we do every budget year, which is the appropriate time to really talk about all this. Is about forty-five thousand for every one percent that we do.
Forty-five thousand?
Forty-five thousand dollars total to do a one percent increase across the board, which is what we've been trying to do. So multiply that times three, that'll get you close, now that was last year or the year before that, somewhere in that range.
Look at a hundred thirty-five, a hundred forty thousand.
There you go.
But, you know, the other side of that is, you gotta figure we're filing a deficit budget of a million six this year. We could cut it all down to. You know, zero, too.
We don't ever spend what we allocate every year, which we've never had, at least in fifteen years, but. Um, I would say that I'm gonna try to push for a COLA with my final budget next year. We didn't do an increase this year, we didn't do an increase last year, I did wanna try to get an increase for next year, don't know if that's possible or not. But I did have that on my radar to do for next year's budget process.
Well, I hope we can all survive, because we're losing valuable people.
Well.
But I, I understand.
We have to do what we have to do, that's what we have to do. I don't want us to get back into a situation where we only have two hundred thousand dollars in surplus, that was not.
And that's not what I'm asking, I'm just, yeah.
You want to talk about the CDs, and that has taken us a long time to build up enough CDs. To have something to operate with in case we have another catastrophe. It was pretty scary last year when COVID shut down everything, as you well know, and we weren't getting much revenue coming in.
We still worked, but yes.
It's, it's good to have some reserves.
Oh, yeah.
Norman, you don't wanna join in on this conversation? You've got your own tonight, right?
All right, well, tha- that's it, I mean, I just kinda wanna know where we are, you answered that and the other agenda items and. Plead my calls.
Well, and I, I really, I've already thought about it, I don't know if I've talked about it or not, but I, I would like to see us do an increase for employees through the next budget year.
What percentage?
I was looking at a five, but I don't know if that's gonna be possible or not, but you take five times forty-five thousand, see what that's gonna cost you.
Yeah.
We looked at a six-year period one time, a rolling average of what the salary increase was, and it averaged two point six. Percent over a six-year period, because some years we gave three, some we didn't give but one, some we didn't give any, some we gave a five. And that was just about three years ago we did that, it was a two point six percent increase every year, which was about a COLA. Now, the world's kinda gone crazy out there now, so.
Yeah, there's nothing stable.
Well, when the federal government starts pumping money back out, you're gonna get inflation through the roof, which is gonna cause interest rates to go through the roof, they're already going up. Fuel prices have gone up over three dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it hurts, I guarantee you, I can tell the difference in my checking account every month.
Yeah, y'all can, yeah, well, I appreciate what they'll do, and I'm just asking that y'all consider the employees.
Okay.
I think we do though, every time.
Oh, I know, yeah.
I mean, you, you're acting like we don't, but I think we do, every time when we don't pass the, the. Cost of the insurance going up to them, and we don't, you know, we, we continually do longevity. Which is something that we don't have to, when, when we continually do the, the two-for-one, when. TC DRS sends us stuff all the time, reduce that, and it'll save you money, I mean, w- when, when we still continually leave the benefit package like it is. When we're getting pressure from the other ones, if you'll do it this way, you'll save everybody money, I think we are thinking about the employees.
And, and I didn't mean that, and I hate that you took it that way, but I know what y'all do.
Yeah.
But there's other department heads that don't send in here, and employees don't know what you guys are doing.
Um, I know. That is the only stinking good thing about this new computer deal, if you look at the bottom of your pay stub, it tells you what the county put in on you. If you ever. Have you ever got your check?
But yes, and you and I visited about, made, uh, just a general letter being sent to the employees saying.
It's crazy what it's cost, the insurance has cost.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Compared to what it was.
But no, I get it, but, you know, like, Summer, Andrea, I mean, if you're not watching.
Yeah.
And if you're not here, you don't know.
Yeah.
You know, there's.
Well, and that's true, because there's a whole lot going, and you, like, you sitting at the table every time.
I know.
Understand what goes into the decisions we have to make.
Yes.
When it comes to whether it's pay raise, insurance, or whatever, they, they are, they are well thought out, I promise you.
Yeah.
On what we try to do.
Yes, so, but yes, I do know, and I appreciate y'all.
Your question was for American Rescue.
Yes, they're mine, back to that.
I chased the rabbit all the way down a hole you wouldn't believe.
Yes, you.
Which, I actually, I wanna do it, I mean, I think, yeah, they deserve it, but we all wanna do it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you just need to be cautious, and I get it, you know.
And for the people watching out there in video world, it's not for the elected officials, it's for the employees.
And for the record.
Getting emails and phone calls like that.
And for the record, I did not ask for a raise this year for myself, my employees only, so yes, get that out there.
I may know that.
But I, yeah, I'm done with my talk, anybody else? Loretta, you were on the agenda too.
I did not put that item on the agenda.
I didn't either, we got stuck to it.
I don't know who put it on the agenda.
You want it on the agenda, that's why it's on there.
No, I just said.
Well, you sent it to, to everybody, and he, judge put it, sent it to her, so put it on the agenda.
Yeah. You sacrificed my blood.
Do we need to take a break at this point? Item fourteen, execute proposal from co-file quick links proposal and expend funds from County Clark Records Management.
So, thank you, Loretta, for printing this out, because I can't print it out, I don't know how to.
Okay. So, I can, I can teach that.
My budget.
Is it right, though?
I think the revenue and expense part is correct.
Okay.
Um, I think the.
It's not correct?
As of this month.
Well, hold on, I'm gonna look at it again, cause I've never seen one.
I'm still missing comdata POs that I cannot get.
Sorry, salaries haven't changed, we've had some pay periods out of there.
Well.
Um.
We're gonna take a break, y'all do that.
Well, that's correct, because the salaries aren't showing out of here.
So, back to my line item, I mean, I know there's money in here for this, so. Yeah.
Okay, how much do you need?
You can look at the September.
I'm so confused now.
Kathy, you can look at that September report and see how much the money is actually in the bank account anyway.
Okay, I mean, I, I haven't spent anything this budget year, so I think, you know, I know I'm good. So, on this, uh, quick links, what it does, and this is part of helping if we're ever shut down for COVID or something. So they're gonna take my very old indexes, and they're going to put those online, and so the public. Even us can search it, instead of coming into the office and running, like, if I wanna say what my ancestors bought back in nineteen twenty-five. They can look at my indexes online, and it'll refer them to volume and page, and that way they know where it is, so if they wanna come in, they can come in.
You don't remember?
I would, I would like to have it where it links up to the volume and page, but we cannot afford that. So, anyway, this will help a lot, just running general indexes, and CO File is asking for, uh. Nineteen thousand sixteen dollars to do this. It will have a one-time setup fee and then annual maintenance and support. Which I bargained that down by four thousand dollars.
How much did you say that was coming?
Nineteen thousand sixteen dollars. Uh, so I'm just asking it be paid out of my records management line, forty, row two.
She's asking for nineteen thousand sixteen dollars, Judge, out of records management.
And we have it in there?
Yes, sir.
We're, we're, we're guessing?
You're guessing, which should have it in there?
Yeah, it should be there.
I have not paid anything out of that this year.
All right.
So it's pretty good.
Do we have a motion before us?
I'll make it second.
Motion made and seconded to pay nineteen thousand and how much?
Sixteen dollars.
Nineteen thousand sixteen dollars out of records management.
And she got them down to four grand, or saved herself four thousand, she said, Judge.
On the annual maintenance.
Well, good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, same sign, and that carries.
Thank you.
Okay, and item fifteen, uses some of the same information. Ask keep, no?
Yep, it is.
Ask keep proposal from CO File for plat hangers and expend funds from County Clark Records Management.
Yes, I will spend, um, requesting three thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. From, uh, number four oh two, again, out of my records management, the funds are there. These are for new, uh, what the plats go in, the, uh, plastic that goes around it.
The real estate survey is platform, okay.
Then we need sturdier ones.
Okay, any other discussion, anyone wanna make a motion that we expend, uh, how much on that, Kathy?
Three thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
I'll make it to a second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, discuss and consider increase in price for turnkey health services for inmates, Sheriff Wager. Come on down.
Well, of course, after the budget, they sent me a, uh, letter, says, hey, we're going up, starting January. Uh, currently, we've been paying out eight thousand twenty-six, uh, dollars a month. Uh, through turnkey, and it's gonna go up to eighty-five oh six fifty-one a month. For a difference of four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-one cents a month, and for the year, it'll be five thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. Dollars and twelve cents for the year.
What are you being charged now, Jason?
Huh? Uh, we're currently being charged eight thousand twenty-six.
Per month.
Per month.
Thank you.
And they're going to eighty-five oh six fifty-one?
This is all medical stuff and. All the crap they do for, for that. So. I need the. Five thousand seven hundred and sixty-six bucks, basically, and for. Somebody to sign this bill. That's not like. We got much choice, we're under contract with them, and the contract specifically says they can go up every year.
It's capped at two point nine five percent. Okay, Loretta, how do we make this happen?
I would just wait until it gets closer to the end of the fiscal year. And, uh, and find out where we are.
Do an adjustment at the end of the year, okay.
I would agree with that too, I just need somebody to sign that.
Do we have a motion then to sign this, uh, reimbursement serp for services increase for twenty-two, twenty twenty-two? Uh, allow me to sign the same and agree to the increase for, uh, this service to the jail. Sheriff's Office, motion.
Second.
Motion made, seconding for discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
I'll do my best, guys, to suck it up in something else, but.
Okay, I'm gonna give, if you'll sign that and give that one to Kathy, she can attest to it, and this one can be done the same way.
Would you get me a copy?
Yes.
Eight November.
I need that back.
If you'll, if you'll sign that one as well, that way she's got a plate keeper.
I don't care, I just gotta email it back to him, mail it back to him.
Gotcha.
All right, good deal, thank you, Sheriff. Okay, this takes us out number seventeen, discuss, consider donation to Meals on Wheels, Mason County Commissioner, Precinct Two. From the sale of old covets, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, Mr. Crenshaw.
Oh, yeah, I had, uh, some covets that we'd pulled up, that some of them was, uh, three months ago, I mean. What they did is when the guys went and sold them, the same guy went and sold them every time, and. We ended up with three envelopes full of cash sitting in my drawer, that I just found like a week or two ago. That totaled up, I do not have the paperwork, I didn't think, I thought it was in here, yeah, that's the receipts, and the receipts from where we. Sold them, and so. I took it to Meals on Wheels, got the receipts for it, I think it's four or five different covers that we sold.
Which Meals on Wheels?
Eastern.
Okay, and where did y'all take it, here?
To, uh, the salvage.
Okay, they should never give cash, so I will contact them.
Do, when, when we take that up there, then what do you wanna do, tell them that you wanna donate it to them? So how do we know that they get the donation?
And, well, here's the thing, if it, if you take money for it, it has to come through the county, it has to come through. The county checking and go out again.
Oh.
So, we can do it that way, yeah, or if you never want to, then yes, we need to tell them this money goes to. Whoever the court has decided.
We've actually done that both ways. We've had it where the, the salvage yard gave it directed to whoever we designate, and we've had it up where the salvage yard pays us, and we bring it up here, and it goes through the system.
I thought once before I was gonna bring out cash, and you said, no, 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 we don't, we don't want the cash brought back up here.
Well, and that's, and for one thing, they should never give you cash, um. Because we've lost control if they're giving county employees cash.
They don't even ask, I mean, the guy said they don't even ask you, they just hand you an envelope when you get through.
There used to pay in cash out, and you take steel out there, yeah.
Um, but that, that's another issue, so, there was, for some reason, several years ago. We were donating that money to the Child Welfare Board, um. But now, I, if it's gone through court and it's declared salvage, it can come into county funds. So either the court can decide to donate to somebody, or it can come through county funds now.
Used to, we couldn't keep it.
Oh, so we can keep the money now?
Yeah, recyclable wasn't part of it, but now it is, they changed it.
Sandy Kegel helped get that into local government.
They changed it where that you can, you actually keep as recyclable, now as.
It's, it, the county purchased it.
Does Meals on Wheels think it's coming to them?
He's already took it to them.
I've already took it to them.
Okay.
I mean, it's.
There are five oh one C three, I'm assuming we can get the.
Yes, because we already give them support.
Okay. Well, I say we make a motion to allow that one time.
I'll make the motion, Judge.
And we got a motion out, just fill in the blanks over there.
To allow, allow what?
Allow the sale of the old cover from Precinct Two for four hundred and sixty-five dollars to be a donation to Meals on Wheels.
Eastland's Meals on Wheels.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye, aye as well, and we're about to get the paperwork up here.
So, we, uh, we just actually wanna tell them that we wanna check. And then bring it up here, and we can use it in our.
There for a while, we bought signs with it, and then they changed it, and then we couldn't do it, and then you could do it, and then, yeah.
Just wait till the state legislator meets again and. All right. I'm gonna give that to you. That'd be easy to file. I'll present it and give that one to Loretta. Do you want one from your record as well?
I've got it. I've got it.
You got it, okay. That'll be good. Okay. All right, anything else then on the Meals on Wheels donation? All right, and we'll move on to item number eighteen. Discuss, consider road cross agreement for County Road three, three, four, Morton Valley. Mr. Maxwell?
Morton Valley, and then just putting in another bar line up to name the crossroad. They've always done a good job, so, um, gave you two copies.
Okay, looks like it's with Zach Portius. And they've signed off on it, and they've included a map here. All right. Gentlemen, discussion. We have a motion to enter into this crossing agreement with Morton Valley Water Spile on a crossing on three, three, four.
And that is in Precinct One.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that carries. I'm gonna sign mine and send it around here. We've got two copies.
Do you need a copy back? Do you want to give them one?
Sure. Sure.
You want me to give them one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, nice, right. All right, item number nineteen is discuss, consider approving MOU with Eastern County Water Spile District in regards to using American Rescue Plan Act funds for purchase of generators. So what do we need to do here? I've got you a copy of that memo, and it does have that part in there on paragraph three. Funds will not be advanced until written approval for such use under the American Rescue Plan Act is obtained. This is something that their attorney, Tommy Warford, put together at our request when they were here a month ago or so. From what I've read, it doesn't look like there's going to be an issue with generators at a water plant at all.
I think we could go ahead and give you permission to sign it when you're ready. I mean, when you meet with the administrator or whatever.
Not sign it today?
You're right, just whenever.
What does everybody else think?
I love that, too, sir.
So the motion would be, I'm just stating this, the motion would be to enter into this MOU with the water district and allow me to sign the same when the grant administrator approves it.
And work it.
Okay, all right. Let Kathy get caught up on that.
Gotcha.
All right, all in favor? There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, we did.
I made it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm still rolling.
Thought you got caught up.
See that deer in the headlights? Look. Okay.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Kathy, you good?
Ah, good, Judge.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, and I will hold off on signing that until we, you do have a copy of it.
I do, yes, sir.
You look just like that deer in the chain's head.
And you sound like Weston, and you say, okay.
Okay.
He's only thirty yards, you know.
Say, remember?
No, that's.
What does Weston call you? What does Weston call you?
Nana.
Nana.
Yeah.
Nana. All right. Item number twenty is discuss, consider approving executing contract with entities for dispatch services and rural fire suppression. And let's see, Kathy in my office is keeping up with the tracking and who sent back in. On the fire department, we've received and signed off on Carbon. We've received and signed off on City of Eastland. We've received and signed off on Olden. We've received and signed off on Ranger. Received and signed off on Rising Star. Then Cisco Fire Department came in at the end of last week, and you know, it was beginning of last week. And, uh, we need approval to sign off on that one today. And we'll get to that package here in a minute. And then on the EMS, uh, we have received and signed off on the cooperative EMS. We sent out to the city of Ranger on September the twenty-eighth. Their contract for EMS, we've not received it back from Ranger EMS. If you get a chance to talk to Darryl, you might ask him about that. We need to get that back to us. Uh, and then on dispatch, we sent off and received back from City of Cisco. We sent off the contract, received back from City of Eastland. We sent it off to City of Ranger, have not received anything back. Sent off to, uh, City of Gorman. I think we've got that in here to sign today. We sent off to the City of Rising Star and received that back October twenty-fifth. We sent off to the East Memorial Hospital and have not received that back. And sent off to Cisco College, not received it back as well. So here are the ones that come in for today. And I've got documents for. Here is the Gorman Volunteer Fire Department contract. May I have authority to sign off on that contract with the Gorman Fire Department?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well, and I'm gonna sign off on that. Kathy, and give you this. If you'll attest and get us back some copies, please, ma'am. Then on this one, this is a dispatch contract with the City of Gorman. And may I have authority to sign off on this contract with the City of Gorman for dispatch services?
Do you only have one?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make it.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. And I am signing off on the dispatch with the City of Gorman. All right, I'm gonna hand that to you as well, Kathy. And then last up, we've got the, uh, volunteer fire department contract with Cisco. And may I have authority to sign off on that contract with Cisco VFD?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And I'm signing off on that as well. Okay. Kathy? Do you have?
She fell over, too.
The other Kathy, do you have a note about which ones came in today to put into the tracking? You probably have already put them in tracking, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, good. I just want to make sure before I hand them all off. All right, good deal. Thank you.
I'll watch some of those hurt back, too.
All right, I think that takes care of all that. Item twenty-one is nine one one update and proper dispatch update. Sheriff?
Everything's going fine out there. Uh, we've been having some radio issues. Uh, finally ended up calling out. It seemed to get worse at night. I'm, we've been going through everything for the last two weeks trying to figure it out. And just one little stupid thing will interfere and make it, it's crazy. Anyway, we've unplugged half a dispatch trying to figure it out, plugged it back in. Ended up being the tower lights. There's a, there's a short circuit in there somewhere. All of a sudden, that is starting to cause interference on the radios. We were able to get it solved last night, so the tower light's not blinking at the moment. It's just steady on, which is better than nothing. And we've ordered the parts to fix the tower, uh, but it was causing all sorts of issues that were just getting worse and worse and worse to forever. Uh, we've got E-force coming back down. They're flying back down, uh, this week to just, just go through stuff. Make sure everything's going good, and, and, uh, we're gonna go through some, how to do a couple of things that we've been, haven't had time to mess with. We're just gonna be here for a couple more days to help us out with whatever we need, so that's going good. Everything else is going fine. We're just, we're busy. It's really, really, it's been really crazy busy. I mean, worse than, this year seems like it's just been worse than normal. Uh, just constant, uh, all departments, not just dispatch.
I could tell you wasn't very good, mate.
This is it. This is my good.
That's his happy face. That's his happy face.
Yeah. Anyway, it's going fine out there.
Good deal, Sheriff, thank you. All right, anyone else on nine one one or proper dispatch? All right, no other information on that. Up there with the county burn ban. Of course, right now, we have the burn ban on. We've gotten a little bit of rain. I only got like a couple of tents. Before that, I got point seven. I don't know if we need to take the burn ban off or not. What did the fire departments say? They talked to you about it, any of them? I had one member of the public ask if we're gonna take the fire, take the burn ban off. And that was like, whenever we, whenever it rained Wednesday of last week, I guess it was.
I was glad we put it on, 'cause that wind that we got.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Yeah.
There was a fire that broke loose, I think Breckenridge or something during that wind.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you could smell it in Cisco.
Eighteen thousand acres of.
Is that what it was, Judge? Eighteen. Nah, I was glad that, at first I was hesitant. I thought, well, we did the wrong thing. It's still green, boy, but when that wind took off and they caught on fire, I was like, man, best thing we done.
So does anybody have any idea or inclination to take the burn ban off? Okay, so the burn ban stays on. No change there. It will continue. Item twenty-three is personnel matters. Ms. Key?
You have the report in front of you. The time period for the report is October thirteenth through twenty-sixth. During that time period, there was one full-time jail guard, no hire, no employment termination.
Okay. Anyone else have any personnel matters to discuss this morning?
I'd like to say we're still one female jailer short for Facebook land out there. If anybody wants to. We can't find anybody. If anybody'd like to put in an application, or if y'all know anybody.
All right. All right, anyone else?
Do you just have to have a gun, or?
Now, we have a motion to accept the personnel report as except, as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. All right, twenty-four, budgetary appropriations matters, twenty-four A, certification of additional revenue.
Yes, and these are all from fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And the first four, please. Actually, the first five are all reimbursements for elections. Um, the first one is from Lingaville ISD, and the total amount received was four thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars, sixty-eight cents. You'll see this revenue, some of it went into general fund election reimbursement. Some of it went to election services and fund programming revenue, and the remainder went to election services fund, equipment lease income revenue. Um, I'm asking the court to increase the fiscal year twenty twenty-one expenditures. Um, and it's all broken out on the bottom, but the total is four thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars, sixty-eight cents. The next one is from Gorman ISD. We received four thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars, twenty cents. Um, again, a portion of it went to election reimbursement and general fund, um, programming revenue in election services fund, and equipment lease revenue in election services fund. And I'm asking the court to increase the twenty twenty-one expenditures as broken out at the bottom. Then four thousand fifty-one dollars, forty-eight cents received from DeLeon ISD. It also went into election reimbursement and general fund, election services fund programming revenue, and election services fund equipment lease revenue. And I'm asking the court to increase the expenditures as broken out in the bottom. Next is four thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars, ninety cents received from City of Gorman. It also went to election reimbursement and general fund, election services fund programming revenue, and election services fund equipment lease revenue. I'm asking the court to increase the expenditures, expenditures as outlined in the bottom. Next, five hundred twenty dollars, ten cents received from City of Cisco. It went to general fund election reimbursement revenue, and I'm asking the court to increase the general fund elections operating supplies by the same amount. And the last certification is seven thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars, twenty-two cents. It was received from the Eastland County Inmate Commissary Fund, deposited into general fund, credited to inmate medical reimbursement revenue. I'm asking the court to increase the inmate medical reimbursed, I'm sorry, the physician services line in the, uh, jail budget by the same seven thousand nine hundred sixty-four twenty-two.
Okay, gentlemen, any question or comments on these items of additional revenue? Do we have a motion then to certify the additional revenue and to allow the appropriate expenditures as explained?
Motion. Second.
Pretty close.
Yeah, he got it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. That carries.
Okay, I got a question. I'm trying to read it.
Oh, this?
Yeah, the next one. What's the question? I guess it's two different fiscal years.
I didn't put another typo on there, did I?
No, this is the amendment changes by fund. What is two zero two, two, zero two zero three eight zero?
One hundred?
Is that refunds?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Refunds, reimbursements.
Okay, so it's showing on the amendment changes by fund, then, now. These are line item adjustments.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
So the adjustments are here. It was revenue, and it's from a previous court.
Okay. It just threw me for a loop, 'cause they don't normally, Roy, it's wrong for sure.
You want that?
Oh.
All right. We're ready to move on to twenty-four B, emergency amendments?
Yes, sir.
There are no emergency amendments, Judge.
Okay. Twenty-four C, amendment changes by fund.
Uh, there are two sets. The first set is fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And as Commissioner Raines pointed out, it has a different look than our old system.
This is your coffee.
Yeah.
We're laughing.
That's why we're worried. Different look.
The different look on the twenty twenty-one adjustments. We just.
Yeah, you got our turn and let me.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
It's a different look.
And the explanation is under the description. It has the same basic information as our old reports. Then you should have a report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, which I'm trying not to do twenty twenty-two adjustments yet, but I needed to.
All right, gentlemen, question or comments on the amendment changes by fund?
No, sir.
Can we have a motion then to sign those as presented?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that carries.
Everybody got their turkey bought up? Cause I heard there wasn't anything.
HEB had a lot of turkeys.
They had a lot of turkeys.
I was already set up to catch him when he come out his door.
Yes.
I thought sold eighty-nine pounds of turkey Saturday morning. Eighty-nine pounds of turkey. Turkey, they call it turkey roast. It's not the full turkey. It's the good parts of the turkey.
What are the good parts?
Well, you know, not all the, the neck and the back, you know, it's.
The breast.
Yeah, the breast and the, Anderson dark meat there too. Eighty-nine pounds of turkey.
And which, who sold that?
First Methodist Church. Lord Drucker. It's our fall festival every year. But a good deal. All right. That takes us to twenty-four D, report of financial condition.
We have two reports. Um, they are still not reconciled. And the first report is September. And I'm giving you enough information that maybe you can tell where we are. Um.
Where are we?
We're working on this. Um, the first section is the cash position report showing the beginning cash balance for, by fund. Um, it's showing revenues. And this is for the period ending September. It's showing the accounts payable. That column is what was paid through accounts payable. You'll see the payroll column is zero. We need to find out why. Oh, because September was still net debt. Okay. And then the other column is probably everything that didn't run through GFA. Expenditures. And then ending cash balances. And then I have to do a separate report for adult and juvenile because they're on different fiscal years. So they're the second, second section of that. Next is the management report from First Financial Bank showing the securities for county funds on deposit. And if you look at page two, the pledged market value is nine million, nine hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred eight dollars, ten cents. And then there is a pledged security listing from Prosperity Bank. And far right, the market value of securities they're pledging is two hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars, twenty-seven cents. Next is the payment schedule as of September thirtieth showing the, um, election equipment that was financed and is now paid off, um, for general fund. Then Roden Bridge, there's lease purchase agreements on three graders and a roller.
Then you'll see the spreadsheet for the month ending bank account totals for September. As of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, the amount of cash and other assets in the custody of my office was nine million, seventy-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents.
All right, gentlemen, on this first set of records for the month of September twenty twenty-one, un reconciled. Do we have a motion to accept that and to sign the affidavit, affidavit prepared by County Treasurer?
Motion.
Second. All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that carries.
Y'all ladies got all your Christmas shopping done yet?
That's the thing. I haven't started.
Y'all ladies, you better hurry up.
It's just six weeks, isn't it?
If you didn't know, I'm down at Shorten employee.
I checked my list. You're not on the right one.
I do have a bag of charcoal.
Did you win some charcoal in the conference?
She's gonna re-gift.
Judge, you already turned in your ornament for the Christmas tree yet?
We're working on it. We're working on it.
Man, I got winter.
Do you?
I really do.
It's due.
I'm trying to help you out. I don't wanna be the only one that turns one in.
Can't wait to see yours.
Oh, we're supposed to turn one in for ourselves? I made one for you.
I'll have to.
Thank you, man. You're welcome.
All right. Number that.
Thank you.
Sheriff's putting his on the list. He forgot.
Now we have the next set of financial statements. Ms. Key?
Okay.
November eighth.
Yes.
Un reconciled.
Yes, I ran this this morning. Um, you'll see the November beginning cash balances, revenues for November. Um, payables, our expenses from accounts payable for November. Um, there is no payroll for November yet. And there should not be any other this time because we've been out of GFA, paying out of GFA only. And then it shows the ending cash balance by fund. And I will note that all it's putting on these reports is the one oh three, zero, zero, zero accounts, which is cash in bank for most accounts. Um, if they have cash in other accounts like CDs, it's not showing up on this report. So we'll have to work on that also.
All right, gentlemen, let me know when you're ready. Any questions or comments on the financial condition as of November the eighth, twenty-one?
Motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded to accept the report. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that carries. All right. That takes us to twenty-four P, investment report.
This is the September investment report as of the end of September. We've kind of already gone over this. There were three certificates of deposit for general fund in First Financial Bank. One, two hundred fifty thousand dollar certificate of deposit, Shirts Bank. One, two hundred fifty thousand dollar certificate of deposit in Texas Bank. One, two hundred fifty thousand dollar deposit in Prosperity Bank. Um, Texas Class, Texpool Prime and Texpool are listed before, below the ending balances in Texas Class. Five hundred ten thousand, one hundred eleven dollars, sixteen cents. Texpool Prime, five hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred two dollars, thirty-eight cents. Texpool, three hundred thirty-one thousand, seventy-two dollars, six cents. Then below in the second section is the American Recovery Plan Act funds. There were three certificates of deposit, um, for two hundred fifty thousand dollars each. And I need to fix that because the interest is going to the checking account. Um, and then Texas Class, four, five hundred thousand, forty-one dollars, eighty-six cents. Um, the collateral on the cash balances and bank certificates of deposit was adequate for the period. This report is made in accordance with the provisions of Government Code two two five six, the Public Funds Investment Act. The investments held in the Eastland County portfolio comply with the Public Funds Investment Act and with the county's investment policies and strategies.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments on the investment report? We've already kind of gone through that earlier in the meeting.
No, sir.
Do we have a motion then to accept that investment report as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that carries. That takes us to twenty-four F, financial reports. And let's see, Kathy, I've got a report from Constable Precinct one, Constable Precinct two. Uh, registry of the court for District Court. Collections from District Court Clerk. I've got the report with County Clerk. Revenues and expenditures. And then I've got the report of collections from the County Clerk. Collections register for County Clerk. And that looks like JP. Let's see if JP four shows up. One, two.
And no.
And no. And no. Okay, so Justice Court, three reports, plus those other reports. Do you have any of the, I don't, I didn't just call.
I have tax collector and DMV.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, any question or comments on these, uh, financial reports, department reports?
No, sir.
With that, then we have a motion then to accept those reports as presented.
Motion.
Is that a second? Did you get a second?
I did.
All right. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Did you get the one from AgriLife?
I did not get that.
Okay, we'll copy it and present it at the next court.
Okay. We can do it now. We'll go ahead and do it.
Sure.
We have additional report from AgriLife Extension on both the AgriLife Natural Resources and also the, uh, family and community health for their reports. Do you want me to make you a copy of this to put in your files?
No, sir.
All right.
I need one, Judge.
Can we have a motion then to accept that report from Texas AgriLife Extension Office, the two reports?
Motion.
I'll second it. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that carries. All right, I think that takes us.
That's my original. Oh, I'll make your copy.
Take that to item twenty-five, last one on there, presentation of bills, claims, and accounts. And we have a few here.
Yes, we have several reports. And I noticed Christina is putting the same information on the front of yours, so this will help you. Um, the first report is October twenty-ninth payroll. It's gross wages. Then October twenty-ninth payroll payables. That is all payables other than unemployment and workers comp. Then November eighth payables for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. November ninth payables for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. These will be paid today also. And November sixth, payables for fiscal year twenty-one com data. These will be paid ta, today. November seventh payables for com data. Those are fiscal year twenty-two and they will be paid today also.
Are we ever gonna get it worked out?
Well, other than, um, purchase orders and requisitions getting stuck in the system, I think our system of, of checking everything and getting them approved is going pretty well. Um, but we have those that are just getting stuck and we don't know why.
Well, and I've got, I know I've got some com data out there somewhere that somebody else printed. And I cannot, I, if I try to go to com data to find them, it locks the whole system.
Okay, if you'll send those to me, I will print them for you.
Okay.
Okay.
And I printed two this morning, again, that said Tessa printed them. I went through and found them underneath the vendor bill. One of them was a diamond pea and another one was something else. Herman's or something. Anyway, then she printed both of them.
Okay, and that is something we requested in here. We've requested, I think, GFA is working on things they can do right now.
Yeah, because if you don't actually physically search for that and look, you never know. Especially if they were printed and they're just not there.
Can you make the default, the unchecked? I make the motion to pay the bills.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you all.
Yeah.
Can we have a second on that motion? Motion and second to pay the bills, claims, and accounts as presented. All in favor say aye. And that's approved.
It's extremely hard to keep up with when you can't find them.
I will request that today, that the default is all unchecked.
There you go, Jake.
Do I need to initial this change in here on electricity?
Oh, I do need to. I forgot to bring that up. There is one change and it's on page seven of the November eighth payables.
It's about City of Ranger.
It is City of Ranger and I believe it was, was charged to electricity. I just need to change that to water.
Okay. Can we have a motion to allow me to initial this change? Can I make the change?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Well, I think we're there, but we had a motion and a second to allow the change on the City of Ranger from electricity to water. That's zero four eight, six nine five. It was at four four zero. It needs to be four four two. And we have a motion and a second before us. Do we have the authority to allow me to sign that?
Please stop and see Tracy on your way out.
I'll, I'll get with it, right.
Okay.
Yes.
All in favor say aye. Okay. Any opposed? Okay, I'm gonna initial that and I've already signed it. Go ahead back that way. This one's coming here.
You hadn't signed it.
I didn't either. I just wanted to stop something.
You, you didn't sign that one.
Oh.
Born in County Rod?
Sure not, Judge. Look at that quick eye.
Thank you, Andy.
Still got in that scope, you see.
Keep an eye for that. This one?
He's got it real good. His eye in that scope. Trying to blind him deer. Trying to blind him, dear.
Who placed that scope? Pop me back in the eye.
Was it a stump or an empty bottle?
Tell us, Jane, which one?
There's proof in the pictures.
He's got the scope, one eye on the bottle.
All right, I think this is a good time to end all this.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a second, motion made, seconded, all in favor to adjourn, say aye.